Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's Common Council meeting. Roll call, please.
Fire. Pascal.
Here.
Rosen Ditch.
Here.
Bargander.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Whistle.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Bureaus.
Yep.
I P.
Here.
Handler.
Here. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on a nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Item number C is the public comment period. And I did, I went around it as much as I could, I would before I read this, just everyone try to limit your, your comments to five minutes. At this time, the mayor will recognize members of the public who have indicated their desire to address the council upon recognition by the mayor. Persons may address the council for stating their name and address. Council may take action on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Anyone from the public wish to address the council? Why don't you just go on over here and get in a line and then we'll just take the first one. And then when you do get to the podium, when it's your turn to get to the podium, please state your name and address for the record.
For the podium over there.
Please state your name and address.
Okay, for those of you that know me, I've heard all your sighs when you see me get up. For those of you that don't, don't know me, I'm Ray Mullins. I live on 801 West 11th Street in Marshfield, out in the western suburbs. And I would like to speak on item number N, like in Nancy this evening. Okay, I would just like to say thank you to the mayor and the council for giving us the opportunity to be able to provide you with some comments tonight on agenda, item not N, which is establishing an ethics board for the city of Marshfield. And I just want to thank Mr. Meyer, or Mr. Wagner, I'm sorry, Mr. Wagner, for bringing this ordinance to the council for approval. And I say this because between my spouse and I, we have about 60 years of experience with, which includes approximately 14 years as elected public officials. And with the balances of positions for political party affiliations, the Tea Party, dairy industry associations, Wisconsin Family Council, Wisconsin Family Action, and the Colby Evansford Police Committee, it is my opinion that the world has probably had ethics issues for as far back as the Garden of Eden. And when Satan corrupted Adam and Eve, and here we are still battling with the same old snake today. Only now, it seems like he has collected a huge nest of others assisting him. And as Solomon, who was known as the wisest person ever on earth, and I stress the wisest, I don't know if he was the smartest, because anyone that would have 300 wives and 700 concubines, I can't see him being that smart. However, his famous saying was is that there is nothing new under the sun, which is what we're seeing yet today. So I am looking at this ordinance as an action move for the city of Marshfield. And I say that if not when, why not now? And if not where, why not here in Marshfield? And if not who, then why not me? Therefore, I'm requesting to be considered for one of the two citizen board members' positions. And I just thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Hello, Brad Henke. I live at 2308 East Billmore here in Marshfield. Good evening, council board members. Again, I'm Brad Henke, a Marshfield resident, and I'm here tonight to voice my support for the approval of the ethics board proposed. My experience with ethics policies at work leads me to support the ethics board for Marshfield. I've worked for Cummins for the past 20 years, and I'm currently the plant manager in our Nielsville facility. I work with over 400 employees that expect and demand that everyone adheres to standard codes of ethic.
Right.
In the plant, we have a strong ethics policy and established procedure for raising concerns, and a designated group of people outside of the plant that investigate issues so we can hold everyone accountable to those same standards. I'm personally very thankful that Cummins has established these ethics policy and procedures for us for concerns to be raised and evaluated. This gives all employees the confidence and trust that everyone, including the leadership team, are being held accountable for their actions. The introduction of this ethics board for the city of Marshfield will improve the community trust in the integrity of the government and ensure, and ensure that all non-ethical behavior is handled in a timely, consistent manner. Thank you.
Can you hear me? I have, my name's Darlene Berry. I live at 511 North Anton. I have three letters I'd like to share in support of the ethics board. The first is from Georgette Frazier, 1801 Woodsview Drive in Marshfield. And she begins, "With few exceptions, Marshfield has a history of clean, competent, and conscientious government. To support this city, to support this, the city has had a code of ethics in place. Surprisingly though, we've apparently had no clear way to process issues that come up under the code where violation might have occurred. This proposed ordinance drawn from other ordinances currently used by Wood County, Fond du Lac, and other municipalities provides that way. The ordinance puts checks and balances in place, establishes a board of ethics to, establishing a board of ethics to legally review and make recommendations on a case and giving the city council the final say. Also, a wide range of remedies are provided for in the ordinance. A legal process is used and the focus is local. As a CPA and investment advisor, I've worked for decades under professional codes of ethics that have real teeth in them to protect the public. I see this ordinance as a reasonable measure that we as a community can take to help keep things clean here in Marshfield government. Thanks for listening, Georgette Frazier." The second letter is from Jane Kennedy Craywitz from 1600 North Hills Avenue in Marshfield, Wisconsin. She writes, "Dear Mayor McManus and Alderman Pascal," those are, I think that's her word. "I support the establishment of an ethics board for the city of Marshfield. This is not a new idea. Many cities around the state have this in place. Such a board could have many advantages. It would function independently in a nonpartisan manner. This would serve to be, to bolster trust and competence in our local government. It would give community members a formal way in which to lodge complaints of ethics violations. It would provide a framework for evaluating complaints, supporting a sense of fairness and equality. The results, including the written complaint, the facts, and the resolution based on facts, would be transparent. We have a lovely community and hopefully will not have many complaints. But when we do, we will have a solid system in place to evaluate them. Thanks for your consideration. Sincerely, Jane Kennedy Craywitz." And finally, my own comment. Good evening, Marshfield Common Council. Thank you for allowing us to speak today. My name is Darlene Berry. I live at 511 North Anton in the city of Marshfield. As an active citizen of this city for over 35 years, I have come to recognize the importance of instilling a greater sense of transparency and accountability in city government operations. The city of Marshfield has had a code of ethics in place for elected and appointed officials for 20 years now. And I recently, surprised, learned that there is no protocol for citizens to formally lodge ethics complaints or for ethics violations to be investigated. While government officials give their time and energy willingly, there may be times when a conflict of interest isn't always apparent to those working closely with a project. As an ethics board ordinance, an ethics board ordinance hopes to accomplish a method of giving the citizens of Marshfield the confidence in the integrity of government and a protocol of checks and balances for alleviating and providing, and avoiding conflict before negative activity and consequences begin to collide. I thank you for your service to our community."
Have to remove the mask. Also, my glasses are fogging up. Make my speech a lot shorter. My name is Bob Bruskinsky. I live at 1007 South Cedar Avenue. And with the recent release of the filing of charges and details and allegations to criminal misconduct of the Marshall Police Chief, along with his admissions, I'm going to publicly comment. We are currently spending money that shouldn't, that we shouldn't be on wages and benefits, also $100,000 so far on attorney fees and duplicate investigations I've heard. Next year, we're looking at an 8.1 potential tax increase. And this fiasco spending our tax money, is this fiasco spending our tax money wisely? And if so, please tell me how. The alleged charges, which I've known of for some time, have made me and many others sick to our stomach, including some of you. That I know is a fact. Although Rick Ramso will have his day in court, I feel his days as police chief are over and should have been over for some time now. So ask him to resign or start the procedure to remove him, along with everyone else that knew of his misdeeds, and had a deep duty to report the alleged criminal conduct and did nothing about it. Maybe a suggestion would be to start a John Go investigation if possible, find out who knew, when they knew it, including appointed or elected representatives, and then clean house. I ask those who state he's innocent until proven guilty, which I fully support. Please remember, this is not a court of law where a legal maxim would apply. The question I would have to ask you, I would have you ask yourself, if he was your employee, would you retain him on your business payroll with multiple criminal sexual assault felony misconduct charges filed with the Wood County DA's office? Have any of you even thought about the fact that he could be committing these crimes right now while the city's paying him as both as, as these investigations drag on? Our city's police and fire commission, with two members knowing these allegations of the chief since early August, here it is November. The police and fire commission members are nothing more than a rubber stamp over the years of his ideas along with his actions, thus showing their incompetence. By not questioning or correcting some of these decisions, our police department is now being held to public ridicule, and morale is the lowest I've ever seen. Recently, I watched a commission meeting where they discussed telling the chief to cooperate without haste. I would also like to thank the alderpersons that have contacted me about this matter over the last several months and their openness and willingness to listen. I understand and respect the fact that being a local elected official is a thankless job for the most part, especially in a time like this. Now, city alderpersons and Mr. Mayor, this has gone on long enough and far enough with no action, although I agree that it may not have been much that you could have done not knowing what's going on. However, it's time to stop sitting on your hands and do something, a good start. Starting place would be to start with a vote of no confidence and/or asking for the resignation of the chief of police along with the Police and Fire Commissioners. And if they refuse, start the procedure for their removal. As for me, I'm not a disgruntled retired employee with thirty-plus years of law enforcement, as some might say. However, I am a disgruntled taxpayer and there are getting to be more like me every day. See you, ma'am. Wish to take heed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
I'll be much shorter. My name is Steve Lu, I live at 1313 East 26th, this is my third time speaking here. I wasn't planning on it tonight. I worked in a city marshal for twenty-nine years under many chiefs and one of the chiefs I served under was Joe Strick. I served under him for over twelve years. He sent me something this evening. He said, "Steve, I will not be there in person, but in spirit. I have stayed abreast of the crisis you are facing and working to deal with. I support you fully. Many have worked hard over the years to build a good reputation for the PD. It is time to rid the city of your scourge. If this is appropriate, please read it at the meeting." I felt that was appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Please.
Brian Ewer from 1924 Wildflower Drive. Just briefly want to speak in favor of the item number N, the Ethics Commission. I think this is an excellent move. As I read through the proposed ordinance, it preserves the process so that those who are accused have a due process as well as has a process so that the allegations can be appropriately vetted and worked through. So I just want to, again, add another voice of support for that proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to address the council?
Just a quick comment, Gerald Peterson, 325 West Hill. This whole matter with the police chief is under the Police and Fire Commission. Watching the November 4th meeting, the video of it, it appeared that the Police and Fire Commission had no idea what's going on. State Statute 6213 outlines the whole works. In addition, city policy refers to 6213 as being how the police department is to be run, managed, et cetera. Appointment of the chief, dismissal of the chief, suspensions, investigation, all with the Police and Fire Commission, yet it seems they're not even involved. That's very interesting. Also, just briefly, the directive to have the police chief answer all questions, that immediately raises Darity versus New Jersey issues of self-incrimination. Anything he answers cannot be used in any later proceeding or to follow. Should be aware of that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to address the council?
Good evening, city leaders and citizens. Kevin Hamel of the Marshfield Professional Police Association, I'm here representing the thirty-two members of our association, many of which are here tonight standing in the back here supporting us. Like many in our community, members of the Marshfield Professional Police Association were shocked and mortified to learn last Friday that Chief Rick Gramsow had been criminally charged with three felony counts of misconduct in public office, a misdemeanor count of fourth-degree sexual assault, and a misdemeanor count of disorderly conduct. As reflected in the criminal complaint against him, Chief Gramsow admitted to having a sexual relationship with a member of our department and association. As such, we publicly condemn the actions of Chief Gramsow and state that our support is unequivocally with our fellow officer who is a victim in every sense of the term. We respectfully demand that the Marshfield Police and Fire Commission hold Chief Gramsow fully accountable for reprehensible actions and immediately terminate him. Police officers are expected to adhere to the highest ethical and professional standards and the same should be true when it comes to those entrusted to lead a law enforcement agency. We cannot allow officers or anyone else to be victimized by leaders that betray the oaths that the officers take to serve the interests of justice and implore our city leaders to take whatever actions are necessary to protect the dedicated men and women that serve this community and ensure that this type of abuse of power can never happen again. All the, you should have received the letter I sent this afternoon. If not, you should check your spam folders, it sometimes goes there. I'm going to publicly read this letter from our police association now. Dear Mayor Bob McManus, City Administrator Steve Varg, members of the Common Council, members of the Police and Fire Commission, citizens of Marshfield. On behalf of the Marshfield Professional Police Association and its members that proudly serve the citizens of this community, we respectfully request that you accept this letter as our formal notification that thirty-two members of the Marshfield Professional Police Association have unanimously approved a vote of no confidence in the Marshfield Police Chief Rick Gramsow. This measure came after much discussion about the recent criminal charges that have been filed against Chief Gramsow and his appalling actions which are violations of state laws we are sworn to uphold and in direct violation of the law enforcement code of ethics, policies of the city of Marshfield, and Marshfield Police Department. We condemn the actions of Chief Gramsow and have lost confidence in his ability to effectively lead us with this insight into his ethical beliefs and moral behaviors. As some of you, someone who tasks each and every one of our officers to commit to the values of the Marshfield Police Department, which include compassion, integrity, respect, safety, teamwork, honor, and professionalism, this utter disregard for these values causes us serious concerns. We ask the mayor, city administrator, common council, and Police and Fire Commission to hold Chief Gramsow accountable for his actions as any police officer would and should be held to a highest standard. In closing, please know that we are public servants who have given our hearts and souls to the citizens of Marshfield and who regularly risk their own safety to provide for the safety of our community. Due to the serious nature of this, our concerns and our sense of duty to the citizens of Marshfield, we took this unanimous vote and submit this letter. Our sole interest is to safeguard this community and the officers that serve it and to protect our ability to provide our neighbors with services that they deserve and have every right to expect. Based upon the totality of the circumstances, we tender this letter of no confidence in Marshfield Police Chief Rick Gramsow. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to address the council?
I don't really, I mean, yeah, I just, it's like...
Any further public comment? Anybody else wish to address the council? Seeing none, we'll go to item D. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of October 27, 2020, regular meeting? October 27, 2020, budget meeting and the November 2nd, 2020 budget meeting? Motion by Mr. Wagner, their second. Second by Mrs. Sparrows, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Peschall?
Yes.
Rosenridge?
Yes.
Argander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Witzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrows?
Yes.
Budke?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
That motion carries, thank you. Item E, staff updates. Removal of items from cemetery, Justin Casperson, Parks and Recreation Director.
All right, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address the concerns that were raised as a result of the cemetery cleanup. The cemetery, obviously a place to mourn and reflect the loss of loved ones. Our cemetery staff takes their job very seriously and make every attempt to beautify and improve the ground. No one takes joys in removing the items left at grave sites nor removing any of the items fun and exciting part of the job. However, to keep things from becoming tawdy and items need to be removed, there are over one hundred burials each year at the cemetery. At some point, items are left behind and need to be removed. The problem continues to grow. This fall, staff remove more items than normal in traditional years in an effort to clean and improve the cemetery. People were notified, the same as in previous years, which includes the city website, a paid ad in Marshall News Herald, notices on the Facebook, ads in the church bulletins, signs at the cemetery, radio announcements, verbal conversations with customers, and the information is located on their transaction receipts. A new thing for this year, staff went on a WDLB Insight Radio Show and talked about the cemetery and the cleanup that was happening. The items left at the grave sites were removed for maintenance and safety reasons. Rocks, statues, plastic flowers, bricks, toys, trinkets, many, many items are left behind and they get shot out of lawnmowers or out of the snow blowers, hitting the gravestones or worse yet, hitting people or vehicles. The damage of equipment obviously takes a toll on the city's resources, but also the damage to the gravestones, which we have to explain to people what may have happened to their loved ones' gravestone. The shepherd's hooks which are removed get frozen into ground. In the winter, they either need to be cut off at the ground or jackhammered out, which takes a lot of staff time. Those have to be removed because our staff needs to get access to additional grave sites interior of the cemetery. Those grave sites are then dug up and then we have the vault company come in and put a 2,000-pound vault in the ground, which becomes quite tedious when you've got to drive around all of the grave sites and shepherd's hooks. The new staff have made several improvements this year, striking a balance between honoring loved ones and respecting and caring for the entire property is not easy. Death and mourning of loved ones who have passed is highly sensitive and emotional and something we take seriously. We encourage people to visit and decorate the grave sites, but also come back regularly to pick up and clean up items that may have fallen over or may have been broken from mother nature. I think our staff have learned more than anyone else in this experience and we're going to try to make improvements. We will continue to improve our communication with customers and ways to improve the cemetery for everyone. We heartfully apologize for the heartache, grief, or discomfort this may have caused anyone in the community or had a level after at the cemetery. If there's any items that you may want to retrieve or have issues with, please contact our department directly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wagner, I'm sorry, Mr. Wagner, I'm very sorry.
I, I, I...
Mr. Henler?
Thank you, Your Honor, I've been called worse. By the way, the first time I want to say, you guys got the clock right, so, thank you very much. Listening to the director of the Parks and Recreation Department, quite honestly and bluntly, I, my mother and father-in-law are buried up there. I've been in Marshfield for fifty years. My wife's aunt is buried up there. And she started the School of Nursing here in Marshfield, St. Joseph's, and retired as the chief administrator of the Tulsa Hospital. I hold those people very close to my heart. They're decent people, they paid their taxes, they paid their dues to society. And when I see something like this, I'm sorry, I find it disgusting and disgraceful. I could have a few more adjectives to add to that, but I will not. I do want to say that, that the state statutes 157.11, I wonder if you're familiar with that, Mr. Casperson? I want to ask the mayor and the city council to take a look at that. And if you really met all those conditions, I would be surprised. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next item. I'm sorry, Mr. Budke?
Thank you. I've been in contact with people from the cemetery and also people that, that had problems up there. I do know, talking to the staff up there, they wish they could take back some of the things that happened. But there are, there are rules, unfortunately, they weren't enforced by previous people up there. And they've done a lot of good things up there as well. I, I talked to them, and one thing that they were looking at doing is there is a flat piece of metal that you can clamp on the headstone, on the top of the headstone. And I, and I know Dan Rogers up there is looking at doing something maybe that even a short shepherd's hook could go on that. That would be on top of the stone, so that's going to take care of some of the problems. And I actually think it's going to look very nice up there when this all happens. I'm very sorry for the people that went through stuff, you know, that's very hard. But I think, I really think their hearts in the right place. They admit there were some mistakes made, but I, I hope we can move on and do what's right and go from there. And I think it's going to look better overall. Thank you.
Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think Justin probably knows that I was pretty upset about this at the meeting when, right after I received a flurry of phone calls about what happened out there. And most of it had to do with the shepherd's hooks and there were some questions raised about, well, you wanted us to take the spring and summer stuff out so you could clean it, but it was okay for us to decorate the graves for the fall and winter. But you took the shepherd's hooks that were there to do that, they were gone. And I think this is the first year you took the shepherd's hook, otherwise I think we would have heard about that before. Basically, whatever communication you used didn't work because the people didn't know what you were going to do. You know, this is sort of why we have a communications department, so that maybe they can help you build a communications message, so you can get your message out. And I would suggest to you, before you do anything next year, that you coordinate with the communications department and make sure there's a way of getting it out. That there is a, there's a protocol for knowing who to call and how to call and how to know who the current owner of the graves are, and you should follow that, or you should have the communications department do that with you. I'm still furious about it. I'm still angry every time I think about the emotional phone calls I got. And quite frankly, I, I think, I appreciate, let's put it that way, I appreciate the fact that you apologized and that's a good start. And I hope you make amends for it next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? No? Yeah, I'm sorry, we can't do, that was for public comment. What's that? Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to follow up on the comments that Justin had made. About a week ago, Justin and I had a conference call along with Amy Bochamp and Dan Rogers. And we kind of debriefed what happened, see what, you know, what we can learn from it and what we can take going forward. And I, I think it was a good conversation, I think we talked about about a half an hour. And playing on Mr. Wagner's point at the end, I mean, there is more effort we can do in the future using Tom Lowes as Communication Director to get the word out. I think they made an effort and really made some, some good efforts to get the word out using some opportunities that they had, but I think Tom could do even more for them with the platforms that he has to reach more people. It's always going to be a challenge because certainly a lot of the people who may have left belongings there are not city residents, perhaps, you know, not even state residents. So I applaud the response that the Park and Recreation Staff has given to this as a follow-up to what happened and I look forward to, to more communication going forward as we head into 2021.
Thank you. All right, next item is item F, mayor's comments. And I'm normally not at a loss of words and I have to say tonight I am. And we have a lot of things going on with the city. It's unfortunate what happened in, in the cemetery. We just got through, the council did an amazing job, grueling job on the budget. There's other issues going on and there's the issues going on that you brought up tonight. It's important for you to know, all of you that are on this great department, we heard you. We heard you loud and clear. One of the people that spoke and I thought his comments were great, talked about our department, and I just want to say that from the bottom of my heart, I am so incredibly proud of our department. We have an issue, we have an issue that we have to take care of, and there's no doubt about that. We have an issue. We have an issue that we have to take care of, and there's no doubt about that. But for all of the women and men behind that badge that go out every single day, put their lives on the line. Thank you. We see you, and please know you were heard. You were definitely heard tonight, and I can't even express my thanks to you for what you do. Item G, Council Comments. Any comments from the council? Seeing none, we'll go on to item H, Reports from Commissions, Boards, or Committees?
Mayor, City Council, and everybody present this evening. First, I'd like to echo what the mayor just said about the departments, the Police Department and the Fire Department. This whole community is proud of everything that you do. I'm personally very proud of what you do, and I give you I take every opportunity that I can to express that to people, officers that I run into from time to time. And I understand your frustration. Anybody that's interested in what's going on, the parties involved, the departments, fire and police, the city as a whole. I understand the frustration because I've got the same frustration myself. I've been serving in one capacity or another in committees and commissions and the council for forty-two years now, and I've had several stints with the Police and Fire Commission. And I can honestly say we've never had a situation like this. There have been some tough times with nothing like this. And I don't think anybody can second guess how dedicated I am to trying to help in my capacity as a commissioner to help run the two departments with the staff that we hire, with the department heads that we hire. It's by no means a rubber stamp. We're not professionals. Anybody on the commission is not a professional. We hire people to do that for us. They come to us with recommendations. They make a selling point. It's either approved or disapproved, and we move on with the programs and processes that run the department smoothly. I think I can speak for the rest of the commission, the other four members, that when I say they're frustrated as well because of the lack of involvement that we've been allowed to have in this whole process. I was the one that took the initial phone call back in July. My job was to turn it over to the president of the commission, which I did. Not knowing any details, just I think you're going to want to talk to the president of the commission. President of the commission turned it over to city staff, the HR, the administrator, the city attorney. And from that point forward, we're sitting here just like you. I can honestly say I don't know one more thing than anybody else in this room as far as, you know, what direction we're going to be taking, what information is available. I spoke at the last meeting and said that we were anticipating getting an update from the city attorney. It ended up being scheduled a closed session. And by the time the meeting came along, there was no closed session. There was merely a directive from legal standpoint on what this commission could and could not do. And quite frankly, I left the meeting thinking we should just sit on our hands and be quiet. I respect Mr. Wolfgram. He is the finest attorney you're ever going to hear or see in action. You have to see him in action. He's the finest attorney that I know. When he tells me to do something to avoid future litigation, to avoid avoiding racking up some more bills, because if we step out of line on this, all we do is add to the clutter, and then it just goes on and on and on. So I'm inclined to go along with his recommendation, frustrated as I am, as regretful as I am. And he knows it. The city administrator knows it. And then personally, I'm very frustrated. I've been making that known more recently. And it's taken so long. It's ridiculous. I again asked to attend a closed session tonight pertaining to the police chief, and I was denied the opportunity as a commissioner. Again, the city attorney, I respect him to no end. So I'm not going to be in the closed session tonight. The Police and Fire Commission have a place in this process. And Jerry Peterson mentioned that the state statutes that govern the Police and Fire Commissions. And we do have a place in this process, and it's coming. I thought by the time we left the last time we were all together and we talked about it, that that point would be coming sooner than later, but we're still not there yet. And the whole recommendation by the city attorney for the Police and Fire Commission not to be intimately involved with us at this point is because we will be the hearing board. We will have to make the decision on what the what is going to be the end result in all of this. And it's like knowing something ahead of time where you really probably shouldn't. So that's the reason, and I understand that. God, I want to be involved more than I am on this, but we just are not to this point. There have been so many entities involved so far in this with the city administrator, the HR department, the city attorney, investigators, district attorneys, labor lawyers, Police and Fire Commission. We take our jobs seriously on the Police and Fire Commission, and I I apologize if we've let anybody down, but I'd feel a lot worse if we knew we were doing something or able to do something and we didn't do it. That's not the case. I can look you all in the eye and say that. When we get to that point where we have the information and we're asked to do our job as commissioners, we will do it. We have duties as appointed commissioners to perform certain duties, and we will do it. It's too bad that it came to this. The Police Department has to hold their heads high. You are respected in the community. You can see that by the media stuff. You've got followings that never quit, and you you keep people informed, and you you you're well trained and you're well equipped. And it's all to make Marshall a better place. I like to have a little part in that by approving things that you request and programs that you want to take part in. It's just a great time right now, and it adds everything else that we've got going on in the world in general, but I wish there was more we could do, but we're just going to have to wait for that time to come. And I guarantee you, and when time comes, we will do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or from commissioners, boards, or committees? Seeing none, we'll go on to item I, the Consent Agendas or Motion to Receive and Place on File, Approving All Recommended Actions in the Consent Agenda Motion by Mr. Bubkey, and second by Mr. Fisher. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote.
Pageel?
Yes.
Rosendish?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whittle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Ferrells?
Yes.
Bubkey?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That motion carries. Item K, Presentation of Business and Economic Impacts of COVID-19, presented by Representatives from Mackey and Main Street Marshfield.
Good evening. My name is Kailin Olson, Business Development Director from Marshfield Area Chamber Foundation, 700 South Central. Sorry, not hearing? Sure? Better? Usually I talk too loud. Okay, I'll start again. Hi, my name is Karen Olson, Business Development Director with the Marshfield Area Chamber Foundation, 700 South Central Avenue. Here today to give you a Marshfield business update, especially as we go through these challenging COVID times. What you'll see tonight is state of our local businesses, as well as a snapshot of assistance provided both locally, state, and nationally. Lastly, opportunities now and into the future. And this presentation is along with our partner. Kailin?
I'm Kayla Gomez, Executive Director of Main Street Marshfield. Thank you for having us this evening.
So typically, I do business retentions, and I do as many of those as I can every year. And that's really going out and visiting our businesses to find out what concerns they have, what challenges they have, as well as what their future plans might be. Well, this year's been very challenging, not allowed to go into a lot of businesses because of the COVID restrictions, but placing a lot of phone calls and connections with our business community from all aspects. So I'm just going to touch on a few of these that we thought would be good for you folks to know about. So looking at the financial institution, most of our local industries have held up very, very well through all of this. Some industries may have shifted, like food, for example. Instead of a lot of the food maybe going to restaurants and schools at some times, it really went more to the grocery stores. You all remember the toilet paper shortages, right? Agriculture. Farmers are having an exceptional year. They really had an awesome growing season. Many received all of these assistance programs that you see and will be talking about a little bit more. And consumption is certainly up in that arena. Hotels, that has been one of the hardest-hit industries, unfortunately, along with airlines, both from the occupancy as well as also the cost per room, and that's understandable in these trying times. Restaurants, that's really a mixed bag. We've talked to some that have done better than ever through all of this. They've been able to pivot. They've been able to do curbside, delivery, drive-throughs, you name it. If any of you drive by Culvers and McDonald's, you'll certainly see those lines never end. But a lot of our even downtown restaurants have done well. Then there are times where, again, you know, new mandates come through or other things, other fears, and the fear never really ends, and that again stops some of the traffic. From the retail industry, most of you probably realize this very well. I'm sure all of you have either done a home improvement project or have purchased something to do in the outdoors, because that's really what we were limited to doing this summer. So all of those people have done very, very well, the convenience stores, the dollar stores. One of the fun facts I like to bring up, baking supplies were just through the roof. There was a six hundred percent jump on the sale of yeast because people were baking at home and were baking bread, cookies. Real estate. Talked with some of the local real estate agents. Commercial has not been this busy in a long time. We need more industrial land, and the city is working on that. Housing inventory, it goes very, very quickly. Part of that is because of our low interest rates. Houses are sold within days, sometimes hours, and oftentimes for more than what they're asking. Manufacturing, mostly doing well. And talking to a lot of our manufacturers, they still need talented workforce. They're still growing. Sometimes they need that workforce to cover if somebody is exposed to COVID and has to be out of the office and things like that. This slide, I'm really not going to go through. I just wanted to give you a snapshot of some of the assistance that Mackey has done for our business world, members, non-members, everything. One of the key things, I think, early on, which really helped the restaurants, Karen Isaacson of our office was able to do a takeout and delivery group on Facebook, which she started back in March. And that, again, was open to anybody to utilize, and it had a lot of followers, and it was a way for restaurants to communicate with folks. Also, if you haven't had a chance yet to look at the three newly released videos for Wood County, Scott Larson here at Mackey and part of Wisconsin Chamber partnered together to do. They're very well done. They're brief. One is on shopping, one is on hospitality, and one is on recreation. These are some of the programs that were offered locally, state, and nationally. We're just going to highlight a couple of those programs for you. First one is the Paycheck Protection Program. This one had to go through our financial institutions, and any of you that are in that arena know how busy you were. All the calls were about that. A lot of our local businesses were able to take advantage of that. It was designed to retain employees, and they are looking at being a hundred percent forgivable if at least sixty percent were used for payroll and benefits. The second one is our local program. It was called the Marshfield Small Business Emergency Grant Program, and I have to thank the mayor. He was one person that really pushed for all of us to do this. Also, one of our local bankers, Al Nystrom, they really said, you know what, we've got to help our businesses. They're hurting. And so these funds were provided by the Economic Development Board. You can see some of the things that were required here. Sixty-two businesses were funded. There were many other grants out there for childcare, farmers, et cetera. So at this point, I'm going to turn things over to Kailin.
The next highlight is the World in Round One. These were $2,500 grants made available for 30,000 Wisconsin small businesses. Local applicants, you can see on the slide, just over a hundred Marshfield businesses applied for these grants, and a quarter of those applicants were downtown businesses. Next slide. Another local program, the Shop Local Love Local Downtown Business Marketing Program. Marketing, of course, is essential for our businesses, but budgets are tight. And while we continue to share resources like marketing and e-commerce webinars and offering technical assistance through local partners like Main Street, SBA, and Score, we also know time is a precious commodity for small business owners. So to begin, we created an awareness campaign to sell t-shirts and lawn signs to support local shopping, keeping that top of mind. And then we kind of turned that funding into in-kind marketing and photography grants to major donors like Seltire and State Bank Financial. It allows several individuals allowed for around $4,000 in total fundraising. We worked with local businesses, Exclamation and Elizabeth Olsen Photography, who could provide attentive, professional, customized marketing or photography for businesses who would apply into this program. We evaluated funds in August to see how many would be able to assist and formulated an application. Twelve businesses applied for this program, and twelve were accepted. Businesses are currently in the midst of their scheduled best session, and most did end up choosing the marketing package over the photography packages. Next slide. World in Round Two just ended. These were $5,000 grants made available for 10,000 Wisconsin small businesses. They'll be administered through Wisconsin Department of Revenue in partnership with the WEDC. Next slide. Local Business and Impact Follow-Up Surveys were held in the spring and early summer. There was a sheet provided to you, offering a detailed look at business impact and follow-up survey results distributed in collection in partnership with the city in Mackey, and we anticipate coordinating another COVID impact survey towards the end of 2020 or beginning of 2021. If you have any questions on this topic, please ask following the presentation. Next slide. State of Downtown. In 2020, four businesses have closed. Only one of those were likely due to be COVID-related. One may have permanently closed, but I don't have confirmation on that. And two actually moved out of downtown to be across from the new pool area. Five businesses have moved from another location into downtown due to relocation or expansion of their company. Four new businesses have opened in 2020. And we're expecting three new businesses on the horizon seeking for currently vacant properties. And we don't know if that's going to be in the next year based on COVID timing, but they are spoken for, large properties downtown. There are currently three facade projects underway. The Deming Building is a highlight that's getting a facelift, contributing strongly to historic preservation in the district. to historic preservation in the district. They have an interior project, of course, in the works right next to Mojo's, specific to an interior project addition that we added to the facade program in partnership with the city this year. For public improvements, we have about $20,000 in public improvements invested downtown this year, thanks to strong partnerships with entities like the Economic Development Board, Marshfield Parks Recreation, Exclamation Cusco, Marshfield Garden Club, Fairway Mortgage, Sherwin-Williams, and Mill Creek Gardens. Planters continue to define the district. Downtown Star Walk has been painted, and will continue to guide walkers down and back Central Avenue from the Ball Field, and we hope to see more foot traffic from the Ball Field generated from the Star Walk, as well as two new maps, yes, one in the Ball Field, and one to be installed in Wendell Family Plaza this month. And we'll say these numbers certainly don't reflect economic security. We haven't seen the true long-term effects of COVID on businesses yet, and we must continue to prioritize supporting local businesses regularly as we're able. Next slide. And we continue to collaborate with the city and Mackey to communicate financial assistance programs, educational opportunities, best practices, while offering safe promotional alternatives to our typical calendar of events. Wisconsin Main Street offers a network of downtown spacing, the same challenge as Marshfield is facing, and we're seeing adaptation and resilience statewide that helps us make decisions and maintain confidence in the future of small business. And I'll pass that on to you, Karen.
Thank you, Kayla. I'd like to back up at the request of Alderman Butke, just to make sure on that Marshfield Small Business Emergency Grant Program, it did show it on the slide, but nearly $100,000 was designated by the Economic Development Board for those small business emergency grants. We greatly appreciate that effort. So this was a slide that we felt was important to include. I'm not going to go through it due to time constraints, but it's called "The Nine Rs" by Ted Abernathy. He's of Economic Leadership. I think a lot of this is going to stay with us maybe forever, but certainly for a long time, working remotely, relocation, robots, workforce, and how workforce looks and things like that. So just something, I think, really good to go through on your own and read some of these, because our world has changed. And I'd like to end on this. Looking ahead, what are opportunities for places like Marshfield? There's already committees, and we're strongly looking at enhancing broadband, that is a county-wide effort. Increasing housing options, that's through EDB and others that are looking at that. Entrepreneurial resources, I think we need to make sure that we have an opportunity for people to start new businesses, grow their businesses, especially in case we are losing additional business. How can we support and assist existing businesses? You see, you know, quality workforce, it's going to be something that's going to continue to be an issue. We are doing everything we can to attract, retain, and grow. Connecting people to local resources, I did talk to some businesses where they have noticed some of their PPE costs have tripled, like a box of gloves has tripled. So when you look at our restaurants, when you look at our childcare, when you look at all of our businesses, their costs have increased in trying to keep not only themselves safe, their workforce, but also all of us as consumers. So, you know, remember that when we are supporting these folks. I know when we gave this to the Plan Commission, they said, what else can we do? And I guess the comment I have would be, support local, whether that's retail, whether that's restaurants, whether that's Mackey gift certificates that stay local. Remember, these people are working hard, they need to stay open, and they need our support. Let's hope 2021 is better. And with that, I'd like to open it up to any question.
Questions from the council. Mr. Bucky?
I don't have a question. I just want to thank both organizations for all you've done for our businesses and all you continue to do. I know you've been working hard and have been helping keep our local businesses on track.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? No? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item L, Request to Approve Budget Resolution Number 06-2020, Transferring Funds to Cover the Shared Ride Taxi Service Deficit Presented by Ron Ammon Finance Director.
Can you hear Ron?
We can't hear you. Ron, we can't hear you.
How about now?
Hey!
Okay. I had a really great intro there, too. So let me start over. All right, so we just finished a lengthy reconciliation process of all our non-general funds, just to make sure we knew what's in the ending balance. For the shared ride service, there's always a local share, and the memo in your packet describes kind of how we got there. You know, as volume's gone up, and the volume in 2019 was over 103,000 trips, so it is a valuable service. The federal and the state share have gone down a little bit each year. So the way it works is the state gives us a flat amount, and then the federal pays us 50% of our loss. So when we have fares and agency fares, for every dollar we collect, we lose 50 cents in federal funding, which, you know, obviously is better for us, but there's always going to be a local share. You know, previously, when I look back, there were certain years where money was levied directly in, or there were funds transferred, but there hasn't been any kind of catch-up since 2017. So the amount of $146,000 is the cumulative amount at the end of 2019. That is the local share, that is the responsibility of the general fund. And looking forward for 2020, it should just about break even due to some grants that we've gotten, and in 2021, the local share in the budget is a loss of $58,000. So this catches is up through the end of 19. 2020 should be okay, but we'll likely have another budget resolution in 2021. If that's what's in your packet, I'll take questions or a motion to approve.
Up before the questions, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Wagner? Second by Mr. Rosenditch? Any discussion, questions? Mr. Butke?
Yeah, and I'm not putting this on you, Ron, but it bothers me that we go into a deficit on this, and I know the government's involved, which is always a mess. But I think you talked about, Ron, that we're going to have to raise the rates on this. I mean, we can't do this stuff and lose money. I mean, I don't want to make money, but I don't want to lose money. I just don't think it's acceptable that we dig ourselves in holes like this. So whatever it takes to... And I have people in my district from Cedar Rail, and I'll be the one that probably gets calls on this, but still, you talk about taxes and so on and so forth. We have to try to come out as even as we can on this. So hopefully, we've got a plan, Ron, and I think you do.
Yep, and we do redo... So in 2019, we introduced agency fares, so that is the, like, the corporations that get passes to do the transport for them. But that was helpful, and it's something we definitely will look at, raising the agency fares and fares. We can never eliminate the local share, but we certainly can try to limit it.
Other, Mr. Henlon?
Thank you, Your Honor. Ron, I have a question. Tom just brought up an interesting point. Who are our biggest users of that transportation?
That, I do not know. I just see the raw statistics. I don't know, Steve, if you know off the top of your head?
On the agency fares?
Yeah, who the biggest users are?
Yeah, there's one big company, and truthfully, the name escapes me. But there's one major provider that is responsible for most of the dollars you're seeing there. And it sounds like, from what I've heard, Ron, and everybody else listening to me right now, that they've, you know, been fairly receptive, and we certainly could look at an increase that ultimately, they do pretty well, even paying that extra fee for those rides that they provide in a collective manner.
That was not my question. My question was, do you know, are the elderly on fixed incomes or otherwise?
Oh, how is this going to affect them?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean...
Those are biggest users?
Yeah, well, you know, overall, yes. I mean, most of the funds that we take in come from users, just in general, seniors and people with disabilities, and other riders make up the bulk of what we take in. And, you know, we've been at $2.85 for a while. You know, I'm not proposing, nor is Ron, proposing a specific increase at this point to some specified new amount, but I think we need to look at both the agency fees and the regular user fees, for the very reason that Tom Butke mentioned earlier, that, you know, we need to keep up on those costs. We want to provide the service that's so critical to people, especially vulnerable populations, but we don't want to be seeing that local share that we pick up, you know, from the tax levy increasing.
Mr. Butke?
Yeah, Steve, and this goes back to some of the mess that we were in with the budget, you know. We should be increasing these fares a little bit each year, so there's not such a drastic thing when you got to come and ask for a lot to make this up. You know, I know, you know, I love the elderly in my district, but we still got to come out and I think a little increase each year so that we can get closer to even.
No, I think you're right, Tom. And I think that there's, you know, obviously, resistance to hitting that population, because, you know, like you said earlier, somebody said they're on fixed incomes, and, you know, to a lot of us, $2.85, jumping to some other number might not seem that much, but it does impact those people a lot. But again, we're providing the service, you know, with the intent that fares and the, you know, the grant monies will cover most of it. And as Ron made a good point of saying, the grant dollars, especially from the state, but federal and state collectively have been dropping, and that's unfortunate. You know, we lobby to keep those up high, but when they don't, we need to make up that difference, and it really should be the users who pick that up for the most part.
Mr. Wagner?
Steve and Ron, either one of you, doesn't the state pay 50% of the operating deficit?
No, the state gives us a fixed amount, a grant amount, and then the federal pays us 50% of our remaining loss.
Okay.
So we get a fixed amount from the state.
So the idea would... So not just raising fares, but the idea of getting, reducing expenses and becoming more efficient, so that that reduces the operating loss and enhances our share. And this $146,000 you're talking about is three years. Is that correct? Three years of operating share losses?
Correct.
Okay. So what I'm... We're not talking about that much money. So I think if we can look for efficiencies and things like that, we will not have to burden the elderly with any kind of fare increases.
Well, and again, this is Steve. I think if we get down to where a local share is more in the, you know, maybe $15,000 to $25,000 range, I think we can justify, at least this is me speaking, you know, based upon the value it provides for our community. As it enters up beyond that, it seems like we ought to be looking at the riders picking up more of it, and I realize that that causes a problem to those folks, but, you know, it shouldn't be too heavily leaning on tax levy. But I think we're doing the right things now, I think that we're on the right track. As far as controlling expenses, it's kind of a catch-22. A few years ago, we increased the hours. You know, we have late-night hours on Friday and Saturday, which is good, we have a fair number of riders, but it also increases the expenses in terms of mileage and what we pay drivers. So it kind of works both ways, but it's been deemed to be good for safety, people returning home from bars and some of those kind of things. So I think if we keep working on reining in expenses the best we can, and maybe minor increases, the way Mr. Butke was suggesting, maybe we can get back to that area where it's more a limited local share that everybody can feel good about it.
Any further questions? All right, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
DeShal?
Yes.
Rosenditch?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whitzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Butke?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
Thank you. It's been a question for a five-minute break. Are we good for that? All right, take a quick five-minute break. Item M, the second reading of ordinance number 1444, request to update the Marshfield Municipal Airport's five-year campus master plan presented by Bryce Henbrook City Planner.
Thank you, Mayor. So the airport is updating their five-year campus master plan with some minor changes that mainly consist of updating some data and some maps. The campus master plan must be updated every five years if changes are made according to our zoning code. Other than maybe adding some hangars, there are no additional plans for new development on the property in the next five years. Both the airport committee and the plant commission have reviewed and recommended approval. And so with that, the recommendation would be to approve ordinance number 1444.
Thank you, sir. Motion to approve, motion by Mr. Butke, a second by Mr. Henler. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Rachel?
Yes.
Rosenridge?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whitso?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Budkey?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you. Item N, second reading of ordinance number 1445, establishing an ethics board for the city of Marshfield, presented by Ed Wagner, Council Member District Five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we're sort of at the end of the long road, although it's probably just beginning also, because if you pass this ordinance, there will be an onboarding time. There will be a time to select people to serve on the ethics board. There'll be time to get them trained. Not, it's not exactly formal training, but at least conversations and work with the city attorney and perhaps with the HR department to understand the limits and the broad range of their responsibilities and their authorities. Quite frankly, I was very happy to see the amount of support that showed up here tonight for this ordinance. I told you before, and I'll just bore you with the story one more time. There's all my years on this council and in government, there have been at least three times when there were very serious ethics violations going on or what I perceived to be that. And when we tried to address those problems, they fell flat. They fell flat because there was no real system in place for doing it. And I don't know how many of you have received phone calls alleging ethical problems from either some elected officials or some appointed officials, and basically you had no way of dealing with them. You had no way of dealing with the complaint. We need, if we pass this tonight, you will have that tool. The entire council will have the tool, the toolbox, and so will the citizens to assure that we have openness, transparency, and integrity in government. I'm very happy to hear. One of the things that you were worried about when we initially introduced this was that there wouldn't be anybody that wanted to serve on it. I think we put that to bed tonight, and I'm very happy to hear that. I ask you, I ask for your support. I think this is an exciting, happy thing that's happening for the city, and I would move approval of the ordinance.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve establishing the ethics board for the city of Marshfield? Motion.
I did. I did. I moved it.
There we go. So that was the... That was a motion. The second, Mr. Henler? Any discussion? Mr. Butke?
Actually, I'm the one that requested Mr. Wagner to take this on, and he did a good job to have an ethics committee. But I would like to ask the people, or ask my fellow elder people, to delay this until April. I would like our communication team, when I say team, it's Tom and David, but we need to get more information. By the way, I appreciated all the good comments that you people made out there. I fully agree with that, but I think we need time to properly explain the new committee to the public, explaining the expectations of the interested citizens. I mean, thank you guys for volunteering for this, but there may be more people that want to do that, too. And I just think that we should give it a little time, and I will tell you, if we postpone this vote until April, I will be voting for it. But I would like some time to get it out to the citizens. As we know, it's hard to reach. I know Tom does excellent, Tom and David do an excellent job with the communication committee to get that out there. So I would just ask that we do that, that we delay this. And I would make, I would make that as an amendment to the motion.
Amended, the amended motion to delay till April?
Yes.
Is there a second? Mr. Fisher, second. Any discussion? Mr. Peshaw?
I think we can see by the support from the community that there's no time like the present to start an ethics committee. As has been pointed out, we've had rules on the books for 20 years and no way to enforce them. Are we going to continue not enforcing them for six months? We can, we can get started on this and still get the word out to the public as to what it is. But there's, I don't see any reason to delay this.
Mr. Whitso?
Thank you. I also want to thank Ray, Brad, Darlene, and Dr. Ewer for their comments during the open comment period regarding this. I do have a few questions. I actually had a resident call me a couple of days ago, asked how to apply for this. And in reading through this, it just simply says, citizens not about, citizens, where are we here? Ethics shall consist of three members. Two members shall be nominated by the common council elected by ballot, or by the council. Citizens nominated to the board shall submit a letter of introduction to the common council. And then the preferred third member shall be a member of the bar nominated by the Wood County Bar Association. Has the bar association been on board with this at all, or are we still waiting?
That's why we put an escape on it, that if it wasn't, they could be appointed like a normal citizen.
Okay. Additionally, it says it's a three-year term staggered to allow for continuity. I'm uncertain exactly how we'll determine the staggered. I mean, I'm assuming to start it would be a one-year term, a two-year term, and a three-year term that would be filling. And I'm not certain how we would determine that. And so I guess I'm kind of wondering, can there be more information than just simply a letter of introduction? Because I think of the marked background of individuals that are applying so that we have a little bit better understanding. And I know that in certain instances, we've had, I think, like with utility commission, they've actually come up to the podium at times and spoken and introduced themselves so we get a little bit better feel. I don't know if that can be added to this?
You can add something to the ordinance if you want. But asking for or looking for information and nothing stops... Tell someone that's asking for information doesn't have an ordinance for that. Those other cases, those other circumstances where you, where we do that, you know, it's not in an ordinance that they have to provide that stuff to us. So nothing stops that from happening, particularly where you may have a competitive interest in that particular role. It just kind of behooves somebody to provide more information so you can make... You can do it either way you want. I'm just saying you don't need that to have someone provide you additional information or for this body to ask for it, for someone who is seeking to be nominated.
Okay. And so what we're really looking for in putting together this committee, this ethics board, we're really looking actually for four members. We also have the alternate. And do we have an idea, again, I'm assuming it's a three-year term for the alternate? That's all I had for questions. Thank you.
Mr. Henler, did I see your hand or no?
No, I was just motioning to do a hand.
Oh, okay. Any further discussion then on the...
Bargander.
Oh, Mr. Bargander.
Thank you, Mayor. On the last meeting where we discussed creating first reading, I guess, of this, I had mentioned that, and I don't know, I didn't hear Mr. Whitso's comments here because of audio issues, but what I wanted to bring up, I had talked about adding, appointing a third public person to the committee to be used as an alternate, then adding a provision that any of the members could recuse themselves if there would be a conflict of interest. So I don't know, I don't see that in here. And I think it's very important that we would have an alternate and it would be some provision to recuse themselves. If we only have two people, I don't see that as a possibility. I don't want to rush this through. I think every time we do, we, it always turns out to haunt us in some way. Maybe Alderman Wagner can comment on this. Thank you.
Everything you asked for is in there. That's number one. Number two, we've been talking about this now for four, maybe five months. I've brought updates to you about it, so I don't really consider it rushing through. And I do not know why all of a sudden there is hesitancy. I have no idea why. And this is something that was quite, quite a surprise to me. We did, we put in all the changes you asked for at the first reading. We put in all of it. There will be... I told you there will take some time to put the thing together, and answering Mr. Whitso's questions, too, about if basically citizens can't apply, can't talk to their local aldermen who ask for a nomination, or they can send something to the mayor and ask to be put on there, any way they want, any way they want to do that. But the ultimate decision of which gets elected for a one, two, and three-year term will be by the council. They can do it that way. And they're, believe me, you guys have handled tougher things than this. You can figure it out. Trust me on that one. So basically, I am adamantly opposed to putting this thing off. If you put this off to April, basically, I've been in this legislative part of the business for a long time. I know a motion to kill when I see one, and I'd like to know why. Thank you.
Any further, Mr. Henler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, over the years, being with this hallowed organization for 12 years, I, I find that the tough questions have always been sidestepped. And I've had ample of time and opportunities to utilize this particular ethics of appointed official. And there was no clear path to it. And I am just amazed that someone would say, this is not a good idea. It is a terrific idea. Look at all the, pardon my French, crap this city's going through. We need to have some clear-cut guidance, and this particular item will give us that. And I think we need to support this. And I could have used it, like I said, a couple of times, but I had no outlet for it. And now, of course, the people are gone. And, you know, just having this thing on the record, think about it. It's a deterrent of the obvious that can easily happen, a conflict of interest. I don't know how many times I personally myself had a mentally abstained from certain things because I thought it was a conflict of interest and not in the best interest of the city of Marshfield. And I have a number of items right now that I would like to present, but I have no vehicle to do it. And that's why I think I'm going to support this. And I think what Mr. Wagner said, by putting things off, it's a kiss, a death kiss, what it is.
Mrs. Burrows? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Henler, were you done?
I am now.
Okay. Mrs. Burrows?
Thank you. I do agree. I mean, I think this is a good, it's a good committee. I don't have an issue with that. But I do wish that we could present this on more platforms than just this, this. This is the only place it's been presented. You know, we have other platforms. We have insight. We have, you know, just different things. And I feel like there is a good interest from the community, but I think we would get even more interest if more people heard about it. And I believe that would allow us to choose, you know, the best candidates to be on this committee. That's my concern. I don't know that needs to be put off till April. Actually, it's a date we threw out, whatever. It could be 30, you know, it could be 60 days, whatever Tom thought was a proper amount of time for him to prepare. I mean, I'd like for him to like actually do a slideshow and go through and be able to do that either on inside or after council or whatever, and get it out on a variety of platforms. I'd also like to see there be a formal application process, not just a letter of interest, because I think that would give us a little bit more insight into people's backgrounds. I've seen people send letters of interest to be on committees, and then I've also seen people want to be on committee and never send a letter of interest. And the letters are often very one paragraph. This is who I am. I've lived in the city of Marshfield for my whole life, and, you know, and that's about all it contains. So I think it would give an opportunity, whether it would be delaying it even just 30 or 60 days, for somebody to create an actual formal application process, and then for Tom, if he's willing, to do some formal presentations at a few different platforms. So I don't know what that timeframe looks like. I don't think it needs to be, you know, till April, maybe, but just a little bit of time.
All right. Mr. Henler?
Those are all good comments. However, I don't have that much time. And I like to, I don't have that much time, age-wise or otherwise. I like to see this thing, you know, all the things that are mentioned are good things. However, we could do all of that while we have the authority to it. Look at it as a transition from nothing to something. And you can educate people within that time. So that's all I'm going to say tonight. It's way past my bedtime, folks.
All right. So the motion on the floor is to delay it. Mr. Wagner?
Yeah. The, answering Mrs. Burrows, if you think I'm not going to make use of the cable TV outfit, the newspapers, and everything else to explain to the council, to the citizens what this is, and ask for further participation, and so we have a pool of candidates for it that will, that will make you proud. You know, if you think I'm not going to do that, I, you don't know me very well. I will be more than happily to... I think this thing isn't going to come into existence tomorrow. If this ordinance passes tonight, it'll start the process of onboarding, onboarding it, getting the public informed and the whole bit. There's nothing, this, I do not understand the hesitancy. I do not understand what's going on here. Thank you.
Mrs. Burrows?
Oh.
Oh. So, Mr. Wagner, I am fully aware how tenacious you are. And I'm glad that you said that. But I really do want to see Tom get involved in it, because that's what we've been pushing for here, is to get our communication director involved in more stuff. And that's, I think, is, this is a good opportunity. And I mean, if the two of you want to do all your presentations together, I think that's even better idea, because you kind of know the ins and outs of all of it. I just think that we need a little bit of time to do that, so that they can come back. And again, then I would like to see put into this actual resolution, a formal application process, not just a letter of interest, just because it will contain more information. And for people who are going to be at that level making those decisions, I think that a formal application so that this, this board can look, you know, at all of their history, all their experiences, and then just have as much information as possible to...
We want the citizens to basically pick this committee. We don't want the council to pick the committee. Excuse me. We don't want the council to choose their own judge and jury on this thing. I mean, you'll vote on it, but I mean, setting up, it's almost like you're setting up requirements for people to be on here. And we want, and we want, and we want citizens on here who have expressed an interest, and we want, we even want people who will rotate. You know, we want people who maybe only run one year or two years, and maybe rotate off and have new people on the board. So, you know, I, again, this is like running through a maze and having obstacles thrown your way every move. And I want to know how come I didn't hear this on the first reading?
Well, I mean, that's why we have more than one reading, so people have time to consider things and think about it and come up with suggestions, I think. And secondly, this does say that the council will be nominating, shall be nominated by the common council. So that was my understanding of the process from the beginning, was that we would be nominating them. And I don't think that anyone's going, I mean, like I say, I'm fully supportive of this and I will vote for it. I just want there to be a little bit more of an application process. And it doesn't eliminate anybody from anything, every... Every single person can still apply. It's just going to be a little bit different than just a letter that contains one paragraph of who they are and that they've lived in Marshfield for their entire life. And that's just what we see often, so.
Thank you. Mr. Bargander.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, thanks. I got to apologize to Alderman Wagner. I, when I reread this on my iPad, and my iPad doesn't show it real clearly because it's in light blue. The concerns I have are addressed in, in the ordinance. I do fully support this. I just wanted to, I really, really wanted to make sure that there was a third person and an alternate. So I didn't want to come across that I wasn't in support of it, but I wanted to make really, really sure that the third person was in there before we vote on, on this. So we can move forward, as far as I'm concerned on this, no problem, okay? My mistake. I apologize to everyone, especially Alderman Wagner. Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion on the floor is on the amendment to postpone. Any further discussion on that? All right. Seeing no further discussion, then roll call vote, please.
Pascal?
No.
Rosendich?
No.
Bargander?
No.
Wagner?
Oh.
Witzel?
No.
Fisher?
Yes.
Spears?
Yes.
Budke?
Yes.
Henler?
All right. That motion carries. I'm sorry, that motion fails five to three. So now we're down to the original motion to approve. Mr. Witzel.
I would like to throw an amendment out there if I could.
And, I'm sorry, what was that?
Never mind. I'm sorry. I thought we were on the ordinance.
I would like to make an amendment to, and I don't know if this has to be a formal amendment or not, but to provide for some of the concerns that have been brought up. Under section one, subsection A, regarding how citizens can identify their interest, I would like to have some verbiage in there that identifies a central location, probably at City Hall, where individuals can, you know, can provide an application in the form of a letter and potentially a resume, can be gathered at one central location and then provided to the council as a whole. I think having individuals contact their alderpersons and say, hey, I want to, I think that gets a little bit fuzzy, so I, you know, just a central location where everything can be sent, it can be provided then to the council members at that point, and the council members can make decisions on that. Again, I don't know if it has to be.
So you're looking over at me, and if you're talking about amending the ordinance, then we, we would need to vote on that and amend the ordinance.
Right.
In that, in terms of that. If you're talking about that that's what you'd like to see as a process, sort of a policy way, you can certainly discuss that and, and you could propose it here. There's not a problem with that. But there's two different ways to do that. It's not in the ordinance. If you're talking about amending the ordinance, then we need to, you know, basically amend it, you know, like that, and you'd have to pass it that way as an ordinance.
I'd like it to be nicely identified in that section, so that there's no ambiguity of how do I, as an individual, get my name out there so that I can be a part of this if I want.
Okay. So that's, you're proposing an amendment to the ordinance, so that's.
Yes.
Something this body's got to vote on then.
Yep.
So then your amendment specifically then is?
My, my specific amendment would be to identify in section one, subsection A, that citizens interested in, or take, or participating in this ethics board, provide a letter and resume to City Hall expressing their interest. For the clerk, city clerk? To the city clerk. She has nothing else to do. To the city clerk that then can be provided to all council members in, you know, in advance of the discussion and selection of that individual.
Is everyone clear on that motion? And there was a motion or a second by Mrs. Spears. Any discussion? Mr. Budke?
Yeah. And I'll be voting for this to move on. But I, I think, Mr. Wagner, if you could, one of the concerns that we've talked about before was all the committees, the citizens, members, there's going to be, have to be a lot of training on that because, I mean, we know a little bit more about what you should and shouldn't do, so I'm sure you're going to have something on that.
Mrs. Spears.
Yes, thank you. I will be voting in support of this also. I do, I'm fine with a resume. That seems reasonable to me. And I look forward to the presentations that Mr. Wagner and Mr. Lauk will be doing on this to, to the citizens.
Mr. Fisher?
I have one question, and I will be supporting this as well, but one question to Alderman Wagner is, you talked about an onboarding process. How long do you see that onboarding process taking? And specifically, what is the onboarding process?
I see, well, I see, first of all, it's probably going to take a month of council meetings, two council meetings at least, to review any applications. It will take some time to arrange appointments with the successful candidates, with the, the city HR director and the, the city attorney. And I, so I think that that probably would take another month. So I think you won't see this thing in actual operation for at least two to three months after the communications program is starting. So, so that's what I think is actually going to happen. The other thing I think is going to happen, and Tom might, Tom Budke might remember this, we had a, we had a very short-term planner, city planner, Strickland, I thought her name was Strickland. And she arranged the best ethics training center, or training seminar, for all city-appointed officials that I've ever been in. It was really, really great. I remember the plan commissioners who were in that were shocked to find out what powers they had and shocked also to find out that they were also, is sitting in a quasi-judicial situation and not as legislators. You know, we do that all the time. We were used to it. But these citizens didn't know that they had that responsibility. I would, I would hope that sometime during 2021, we can find somebody who might be willing to come in and give a, give a, a program on ethics and the responsibilities of elected officials.
If I may follow up, Mr. Mayor, please. Thank you for that explanation. Part of the reason I ask is, as many of the council members know, I mean, we've already had an email sent to all of us requesting an investigation into, an ethics investigation. So I guess my question is, I also think there's a lot of confusion, and so that's why I'm also very supportive of having our communications director working with you to communicate what this actually will look into and what it won't look into. Because even the calls I've gotten, and I haven't gotten that many, but the few calls I've gotten, there's a lot of confusion. Is this just pertain to staff? Does this pertain just to elected officials? You know, I had one person ask me if they could bring ethics violations against their neighbor. I mean, it's just, and there was an easy answer for that one, but there's just, there's confusion. And as much as I would love to believe that all of the citizens of Marshfield watch these common council meetings with excitement, they're probably not. And so I think we need to do our due diligence to communicate what this actually will entail, what this will not entail. And that's very important to me. So I will support this. As I said, I just feel very strongly, we need to communicate well what this will entail, what people are signing up for, what we will be investigating, so that there is no confusion. Thank you.
I mean. One final thing, as, I'm presuming you guys are going to be voting here. You're doing something very unusual with what you've done with respect to amending the form of this ordinance. Normally what happens is that you have a form in front of you and you know, everybody looks at it, it's like a contract, you see all the words there. Now, we've made an amendment to that, and I, I'm not going to tell you, don't do it that way, but just so everybody knows what they're voting on, you're voting on passing the ordinance with the language that's there amended by the language that has been proposed by Alderman Witzel. And when you pass this, that ordinance will be changed and signed based on specifically your wording here, okay? Does everybody understand that? I'm actually not, wasn't intended as a question, but just so that you all understand that.
Mr. Witzel.
Am I getting yelled at?
No, 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 but I, I obviously want you to understand that we are doing something unusual because normally when you have an ordinance, we all see it, we read it twice, and, and you see the language that's being used. This has been slightly modified last time, and it was in front of you, and we're now modifying it again. So just so we know, that language that you read before is going to be part of your legislative decision to pass this ordinance, it's going to be the language of the ordinance.
For, for clarification, we're going to first vote on the amendment, I'm assuming, and then we'll vote on the, if the amendment passes, the amended or otherwise. Would it be your recommendation to wait for a second reading of the newly whatever, or?
I'm not, I'm not going to, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about delay. I don't want to get involved in the politics, and I would be afraid that, you know, me recommending that you delay that is going to be interpreted one way or the other on that subject. That's up to you guys to vote that way. I think you've got it close enough, and your amendment isn't a significant change to this. But just so you do understand, we're changing the language by what you've proposed as an amendment, so.
Mrs. Spears.
Okay. With that in mind, can Mr. Witzel just repeat then what he wants that language to be? I don't think it was too much, really.
I have no idea.
I mean, I understood it that you wanted that the.
I know what I have in theory, but I.
Oh, shoot. I will take, sorry. I will take it off the tape, Alderman Witzel. But basically, you wanted us, us to add verbiage that, to identify that any citizens that are interested in being on the ethics board to provide a letter and resume to the city clerk.
And your resume, right?
That, that will be presented to the common council with consideration.
Mr. Fisher.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm assuming though, we are striking out then, and I think we need to communicate that as well. We're striking out that they're not, they're not contacting their aldermen.
Hey, that wasn't in there.
That's not in there? So that was just your proposal? All right.
All right. Mr. Budke.
Mr. Wagner, are you okay, agreeable with that amendment?
From what I believe it is, I seconded it.
Oh, I missed that.
Yeah, I know.
Mr. Mayor? Any, yes, sir.
I called a question.
Right. All right. With no further questions, then please vote.
Pascal?
Yes.
This is on the amendment.
Yep.
Pascal, yes. Rosendich?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Witzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Spears?
Yes.
Budke?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously, so now we'll go to, back to the original motion. Mr. Witzel.
So we can just, I don't know, delay this meeting even longer. Just again, real quick, as we are getting ready, I'm assuming to probably pass this, do we have an idea of how quickly people should be looking to apply? Are we looking at a deadline? Are we not going to worry about that? Communications come out, are we, you know, I just, from my own mind, kind of curious to know what our timing looks like for this.
I think the communications will, will be put out in such a way that they will know when, when the window opens to apply.
So we can maybe expect beginning of the year, 2021?
Yeah. It's getting close to what some people refer to as Holy Week, and that's deer hunting season. And that will, and then the traditional holidays will follow after that. So I don't see us doing the onboarding, a lot of onboarding during that period of time. I think maybe if Tom's schedule is available, I think we'll, we'll use that time to get the word out.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other, any further questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Pascal?
Yes.
Rosendich?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Witzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Spears?
Yes.
Budke?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Item O, request to approve the communications plan for the city of Marshfield, presented by Tom Lauk's communication director.
Thank you. I'll briefly go over the plan that I went through last council meeting, and I'll go on five things of who, what, where, why, and the sixth thing, how. And I'll make it pretty brief. What is, what are we doing? What are we seeking? We're looking for your approval for a communications plan that is followed by all city departments. And right now, we're, are, we're accept, not accepting, we're not using fire and police, library and utilities at this time. Not saying that we won't work with them. We gladly will. I just sent out a news release today for the library. They have different boards that we'd have to work with on that. The why? To ensure information reaches the correct audience consistently and professionally and accurately. And that's why we need this plan. Who? The public gets it. City staff, elected officials will get accurate and timely information when the communications department employees are able to use their multimedia skills to craft a message such as a video, possibly a news release, photos, letters, posters, brochures, and more. How and when would this happen? And how would you do that? Well, again, it starts at the project. City staff will need to bring in the communications staff right at the beginning of their project. So there's ample time to plan effective multimedia pieces and determine the platforms that should be used to get the message out. There are several multimedia pieces that need to be created, which is also determined by the audience that you're trying to reach. Where do we do this? Well, we use a lot of platforms, such as television. We have Marshfield Media Access, channels 989. We have a city channel, 991. We have local news channels, WAOW, as, as an example. We also have the internet, and we have print to work with. We have our city website. We have social media channels that we operate. There are mobile apps that we're looking at. There are kiosks that we're looking at. We heard tonight that Main Street, Main Street is using, is going to have two kiosks. How do we work with that? Digital signage is another area. We use that quite a bit right now, not just at City Hall, newspapers, magazines, and more. And then there's radio. Don't forget about radio. That is powerful here. There's both regional radio stations, both AM and FM. We could look into low power. A lot of cities have done that. You'd have to look at the, the window of that. So what I'm saying, there's a lot of opportunities. So this is the second reading to approve this plan, and I open it up to any of your questions.
Thank you very much. Their motion to approve, motion by Mr. Witzel, second by Mr. Fisher. Discussion question. Mr. Budke.
I would just ask, and I brought this up at the last meeting, that, you know, it's a, it's a new thing. We have to get departments to work more with our communication department. I, I think it's, it's a slow process, but we have experts now at communication. And sometimes we don't communicate real well to the public, and they're professional people. So I would ask, and I'm glad Mr. Wagner is going to use Tom, so that's very good. And we need that from everybody to really do what we can to communicate to people. So, and again, I think Tom and David, for what they're doing, they're very busy, but they do a good job.
Other questions, comments? All right. Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Pascal?
Yes.
Rosendich?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Witzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Spears?
Yes.
Budke?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
Thank you. Unanimous approval. Thank you, Tom. to fill a position on the Economic Development Board that was vacated by Lisa Strom and Chutz. The appointment expires in twenty twenty-two. You did receive, um, a copy of her resume. And, um, with that, I'll look for a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Wagner, second by Mr. Witzel. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Paschal.
Yes.
Rosendich.
Yes.
Bargander.
Yes.
Wagner. Witzel.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Spears.
Yes.
Budke.
Yes.
Henler.
Yes.
And that motion carries. Thank you. Uh, item Q, adjourn to close session under Wisconsin statutes, chapter nineteen point eight five one eight, deliberating or negotiating to purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds or conducting other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons are involved. Review purchase offer for a property located within Tiff District Number Seven. Review lease extension for a property located at three oh five West Third Street and close session under Wisconsin statutes, chapter nineteen point eight five one G, inferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Update on employment law issues involving police department. Update on litigation involving attorney. Is there a motion to go into the close, uh, close session? A motion by Mr. Witzel, second by Mrs. Spears. Roll call vote, please.
Henler.
Yes.
Budke.
Yes.
Spears.
Yeah.
Fisher.
Yes.
Witzel.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Bargander.
Yes.
Rosendich.
Yes.
Paschal.
Yes.
And Bargander has the, what does he have to do, is it?
Ken.
Ken.
Hello?
You'll have to hang up now and I'll call you back.
Thank you.
Thank you.